All right, good evening. I'm following the planning, situat planning board meeting for December 19th in order. I will accept the motion on the agenda.
Aye.
This is seven.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have at seven o'clock a continued public hearing, question of common driveway and stormwater permit, four, four, three to four, six, one. Chief Justice Kushner, hi, Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board that don't know me, my name's Attorney Ben O'Brien. I actually live in Sitewith. I work in Dolph in both places, so this is great to be here, being up there at the C Board at seven o'clock. My, I've known the applicant for about thirty-five years, and I represented, first we said that we were part of this transaction. I had really sort of been watching the, not even watching, but dreaming about the meetings from clock. So, the chairman and the planner came up to me a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about a couple of things, and believing the planners, I believe, say, let's meet and kind of see what the board thinks about giving yourselves alternatives, kind of get some feedback to see what might work. Obviously, we understand the board's role and job, and I think, from my perspective, since I haven't been here, I'm not sure what's considered, not said, what's been presented and has been presented. So, to the degree of being repetitive, I probably agree. Basically, there was a presentation for a special permit. And with a special permit, as the board knows, there's a different level of review. And you've probably already seen all the stuff, but this is kind of how a lot of processes work for us, and then we'll see how, you know, how your thought process reacts to it. So, a few years ago, there was an AI plan, and this was approved, and this is, from a planning perspective, allows the board, and the OCS is allowed. But it's something that is approvable and works from a pure approval perspective. We didn't like that, so we looked at a couple of other alternatives. One alternative that wouldn't allow a special permit is this alternative. The biggest problem with this, of course, is there are drive-throughs. I don't want to do that. This wouldn't require a special permit because no more than two blocks are sort of letting these drive-throughs. So, that would avoid the special permit process. But in this instance, there's five drive-throughs. Again, it's approvable, very easy, but from a design perspective and planning perspective, it's not the best alternative. So, we went right to what we thought was the better approach, to eliminate five of the drivers altogether, go with a special permit. The difference, obviously, is with a special permit, the board has to approve it on the special permit guidelines. And on the special permit guidelines, you have to look at the intent of the bylaw. And the intent of the bylaw is that you need to protect the light lanes, which I think is in the center of the specialty area, and to reduce the number of projects. So, you know, outside looking in, this looks like a great plan, but from the board's perspective, it may not be for their dis- reasons. One of the things, when we did meet with the chairman and the planner, there were a couple of different suggestions they had talked about, and we looked at going over and ensure that maybe somebody's, do you have anything?
Yeah, put that.
One of the benefits overall by way of this plan is a lot more of these spaces setbacks and easement areas. And one of the things we did, and I'm sure that you know, we face a lot of this, is we increased the size of this buffer zone, and we turned these houses away from those back rocks, shot in the drive, and set the foot goes further away. Our early goal was to minimize the amount of clearing on the way around, take as much of the space as possible. One of the other things we talked about, we never talked about specifics, was to make this sort of an open space, restricted clearing. So, why would kicking these things around, chairperson said, well, the board may have other ideas, other comments, they may give for a different design, a different thought process. We designed, you know, from an efficient perspective, we think, but it may not be what the board wants or survives. So, the goal here is to try to dial off and see what the board's looking for, the various members of the board might be interested in getting this done. Obviously, we think AI, AI plan doesn't make any sense, but it's what's allowed. We think something posted to this makes a lot more sense for a stricter perspective.
So, after the last time, the applicant was in, and I met with them, and we tried to, you know, they obviously would like a plan that is approvable, and so, one of the things that we suggested, this was prior to getting the DPW comments, we suggested that maybe the development was too dense, maybe they ought to treat the reservoir as a water supply, even though technically it's a tributary to the water supply, and give it a four-hundred-foot buffer. And we talked about sequencing of the project and erosion control. And so, I suggested that they might want to come and have some of these more conversations with you, to see what you actually thought, what you would potentially approve.
Thank you. Rebecca, start with you. I'm just going to make one comment at this point, but I do like that those cott houses or units are not as close to the neighbors to the, it's not northwest, west.
Northwest.
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 At this point, some of the, you can, I think.
Just as a clarification, is the light blue shading, is that the limit of the disturbance or something?
Yeah, the light green is the limit of disturbance. You know, dark, dark green is what we're proposing as a permanent open space easement, that it will remain in its natural state, and then kind of the intermediary colored green here. This is area that's undisturbed. We're not putting a restriction on, but it's undisturbed area.
Okay, so there won't be any clearing or any equipment?
No, sorry, we're coming in.
So, from my perspective, obviously, what we have here is a large parcel of land that's currently wooded, that provides a lot of environmental services and such for, particularly for our drinking water supply. And as everyone else, we just went through kind of a heated town meeting where water supply preservation and both quality and quantity is obviously at the forefront of everyone's minds, and that's kind of what, you know, what the people want is kind of what drives a lot of the planning decisions that we come up with. So, seeing this plan, like, all of us are fully aware that it's, you know, you're in compliance zone, and you're following what you can do as a right. For me personally, what I would like to see is, I guess, a little bit more innovation in the actual design and layout of the buildings, particularly as it applies to site disturbance, and maybe look at ways that we could minimize clearing to the greatest extent practicable. You know, I'm not saying it to do a full, like, alternatives analysis of different things, but some way where we could really kind of tighten up that clearing and tighten up the amount of, I guess, lawn area. Another concern I have is how that site work's going to be accomplished. You know, I know what the stormwater kind of rates say for lawn, established lawn area in terms of infiltration and runoff, but there's also the reality of causing major soil compaction during site work, and the effective infiltration rate might be much lower there in those lawn areas. So, I just think we should need to kind of look at kind of how the site work's done and how much of that kind of wooded area is going to be disturbed, not just for the plant material, but also for the soils, as we know native soils are going to be much better for kind of stormwater treatment and infiltration rates. Trying to think, another thing to consider is potentially having some sort of condition in condo ducks that would fully ban the use of any sort of lawn chemicals, fertilizers and pesticides. And I also wonder if we should consider some sort of redundancy in the stormwater practice. So, in the event that we have, you know, a bunch of siltation and something fails, you know, some safeguard that if, you know, with this large development so close to the water supply, we can ensure that the stormwater infrastructure is going to always do its job, and it won't have any sort of detrimental impact. That's really my comments at this point.
Steve?
Well, I, I'm just Rebecca, what Ben is saying here is that trying to find a way to do this that preserves as much as possible the sort of existing sort of vegetation, tree line there. And I also note that, you know, just looking at it from a kind of a very big picture overview, this side of the tack factory pond and reservoir tends to have a very big sort of buffer zone between any development and the reservoir, whereas the other side, you know, it's sort of encroached upon it. And I would say if there's a way to preserve as much buffer as possible where all of the water would tend to feed into the tack factory pond, it would be a key issue. You know, maybe it's just about density, you know, can you move, can you take a few of those houses out, really kind of move things back from the pond? I mean, I, just the kind of the three driveways lined up like that seem to me to be something we could transfer, boy, particularly on Chief Justice Kushner. And I know it's better than pocket, but I can't, well, I can't imagine the DOT would actually go for eight, right? But, you know, if you could, so I would say density issue, providing the maximum buffer here, I'm just looking at what we've got right now, and it seems to me to be one of those things we shouldn't be sort of intruding on that sort of natural buffer we have. And all of this is coming, and I know you could put something in the bylaw or in the, you know, in some kind of restriction that says you can't use any chemicals, but there's no way to police that, right? And there's nowhere, any way to guarantee that that won't happen. So, maximizing the buffer between, you know, between the pond and wherever the development goes here is something, you know, I'd be interested to see.
Yeah? Well, I feel like we keep what the other three people have said, but have you applied to MSGOT for the application to three driveways yet, and they wouldn't be approving, she goes to the law?
So, we've reached out them, to them for preliminary review, and they provided that based on the three common driveway layout. You can't officially apply to them until you have all your local permits, and we will probably come back and then.
So, I agree in the Ashtray, which they decided not to do, but in first line says, the more driveways you have, the more accidents you have. So, that's literally the first line of the Ashtray, and they apologize. So, literally, they're from the property, we have two, got this property, just seven driveways there, with these three driveways going. So, I mean, two streets, and there's Dr. Stowe, there's Sterns, or Forge, whatever, two different little church, and then a community, and so. And my fear is although I'm worried about water and runoff and whatnot, that's a dangerous piece of roadway for all kinds of cars coming up here. So, I live in probably one of the worst places to get out, which is right across the street. It could be again, like, seven, eight, nine, I could walk faster. My concern is that especially on Sunday morning, if people come to live in a church, there's a lot of traffic there coming from there. And when you're in the speed, you can't control speed on a day, right? You have to stay, right? So, you know, is that like, like, when you take those driveways, are they flat at the end, how do you have to stop and turn?
Sure.
No. No. So, and they don't like their flat, so is it going to be on a right turn after those and that side?
So, the driveways are all, and MSDOT asks that they all be twenty-four feet wide, and they're all paved, and they all have a radius, rather large radius, I think the number's at a twenty-foot radius, too. They wouldn't be restricted with right handle and left handle, but it would be one way in, one way out, with each of the pathways.
And then on the fire department, he said, okay, when you go through the slot, you get to that end house, age away, I know, but yeah, so, right, so, so, which also is our part, you know, runoff, going down the road, and whatnot, so that's a huge issue for, for problems. So, are we, is there a car by that, or is it three A?
No, so, yes, three A is a state road, so I would say these would all be privately closed driveways. There is room on the islands, we have islands in the middle, which have policy to pile some snow. There's also a minimum of two-foot shoulder on your side of the common driveway, you know, so you would have snow on either side of the common driveway as well.
I don't think my wife's taking a left turn in three, or fifteen, or going to run a circle.
Yeah?
Yeah, good shopping does something most of which is uncovered, but this is walk through. One's the destiny, is it destiny concerns me? Destiny not only in the number, but in utilization, in cases, you know, you can, oh, there's some children in the area, there's really not a playground area, or not an area other than putting in, putting in rainwater. And it's concerned us a little, should be restrictive for that. The first, what I call the first intersection, traffic laws regulation is clearly concerning, looking at that. Site disses, but it looks like this is a potential accident, it's going to happen. We started talking about the side of, the side view, what that driveway would look like, that would actually start out correctly from wrong, it starts out and drops back down again, and it goes back up again. So, it's going to happen on all of them, so you're going to have, that part of the land really not much, much use can be used. So, coming out, thinking whether a left turn or a right turn, that intersection is particularly dangerous in their own. The rain gardens concern me a little bit, I think, the way that, and I believe actually being near stomachs that they work. My concern is that there's awful easy from the fail, and a concern about groundwater feeding them as well as coming back up. And if they're not put incorrectly, that phasing, you talked a little about, that is concern, putting it in to make sure that they're all functional. And I think when it gets to homeowners, that homeowners are going to have to be, for some thing available for the government, and you know how to take care of the rain Cut and fill, it looks like even though it may be a smaller area now, shaded than what I envisioned earlier, it's still, still kind of putting people in a lot of trouble here. What's the, what's the footage?
The total is right around sixteen thousand yards, about a thousand, you can definitely estimate.
For each, each location, what am I talking about, taking that from the?
So, it's, it's a fill for the entire site, sixteen thousand yards in total, so it's a thousand yards per unit.
Okay. If you didn't mind if I ask, just make sure I understand that. Instead of fill, so, is there no cut, it's just all fill?
It's, the site is almost all filled, the only cuts are where the foundations are, where we have drainage devices on.
Yeah?
Oh, the four-hundred-foot buffer. I think that, I'd like to see the four-hundred-foot buffer, the, 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 the map, it's very sensitive site, and that. And at the same time, what I'd like to see is some sort of failed, failure in process, or not a failure in process, but failure, deal with any failures in the rain gardens, and so that there's a backup system. One fails, the one in the middle fails, some, basically, it would be impacting both one and three. So, this is a concern. And the open spaces, it's nice to make it there, question is how do you maintain? Because I don't know what your thoughts are about if you arrange to have that, but instead of maintaining. And I think that's about it for now.
Have you given any further thought? And I do appreciate the fact that you've turned those houses up top. Any more thought to the possibility of reducing redress?
We did speak with the sellers, and trying to negotiate, and they said, no, we have a process where we can take cactus on, for a little longer, so they're not willing to take that loss, and that's kind of how the project works, based on the budget. So, we did approach them, we did ask them, we did, I figured, maybe they got to the real estate, and also, you know, this is our feelings, mistake, or whatever you want to call it. I don't know if they pay in banks or bill for us, I don't know.
Sure.
I don't know, but.
Is there any possibility of taking the ones closest to the reservoir, and basically sort of turning them? Turning them so that the ones to the right is closer to, so that they turn, kind of on clockwise?
So, this unit here, the face of it, which right now faces the policy, would face three A?
No, would go up.
Clockwise.
Clockwise, it'd go clockwise.
Right on.
Yes.
So, you'd take this unit and move it?
There, and then just somewhere?
Yes.
And the other one, and so on, so that you'd end up with more space between it and the reservoir. I'm not sure if that makes any sense or not.
I must, I know it's a seven, but in the, in the mid, or the challenge is each of them's actually going to lock, and when it's, where it's actually locked would be the challenge. But if you turn it, you'd be turning away from the, away from the, certainly, look at that.
Okay. All right. I want to repeat what others have said. This is a public hearing, is anyone in the public that would like to participate?
That, how do you count? Where are you going to fall under the property, that's the, except?
Sure, so the, so we can have a picture of the year's, so the fork, well, the setback that legally exists, and I'll show you the fork. The setback that exists is called a zone A, it's a two-hundred-foot setback from the reservoir. The restrictions in that, as far as our local zoning, there's only one restriction, it's that you can't, there's a no disturbance zone for the first hundred and fifty feet of it. The restrictions per the state come down to the Title V septic systems. Title V septic systems can't be located inside of the zone A. But a house can be located inside the zone A, a little clearing can be inside the zone A. So, what I highlighted in red here is where the two-hundred-foot falls based on the proposed elevation of tack factory pond, as you know, tack factory pond is being raised in elevation. To go out another two-hundred feet pushes it to right here. Lot eight appears to be the only lot that would have a structure inside of it, which would be permissible. But currently, the septic system for lot eight, how we have it designed, is right in this area here, so we'd have to relocate the septic system for lot eight. That would be the only change associated with a four-hundred-foot setback.
Well, that's really the DPW we would like to see, with four-hundred, and I think if we were able to somehow turn this clockwise, you might be able to keep your, some of that house, or that structure, within four-hundred feet of the septic system with the other. You can do this.
I just forgot to mention one, one thing I was thinking, based on public comment at the last meeting, is with the proximity, well, first of all, I don't, was there an existing conditions plan for this, that we received or not?
We did.
Well, I just, I don't remember looking at it, so, but either. I, one thing I was thinking about after the public comment, given the proximity of the water supply and whatnot, and what people said is that there's an awful lot of water that comes down the hill through a butter's yards, and I'm saying that thing, and I just really would like to make sure from a surveying perspective that we don't have any sort of intermittent tributaries to the water supply, because I believe that creates another, some sort of one-hundred-fifty-foot setback or something. So, I kind of want to make sure that this land is really valuable for the presence of any sort of drainage channels, intermittent tributaries, something like that, that could be a direct conveyance of water to, which would then afford this other sort of setback limit.
Sure. The Conservation Commission provide a comment on this?
No.
No?
It's not, then, I mean, basically, only the small part within their jurisdiction, so you weren't doing any work within their jurisdiction, so.
But I want to get circulated to departments, they didn't provide any comment on it, so maybe we should seek a comment from Conservation. I can tell you the wetland line here was established by the Conservation Commission, and this project, this project, this property has been in front of the commission several times in the past. None has been found. I personally walked the site, I haven't seen any, but maybe we can reach out to Conservation again, and do another one.
Well, if I could follow up on Ben's comment, I mean, the decision from the, that was formally approved for this project, did highlight that perhaps some type of hydrogeological study needed to be done to verify that there were no channels of water coming out or groundwater tributaries of anything. Another option is for the board to take a site visit. Are you the public? Yes, sir.
Robert, Jesse, and I Sterns wrote. I just want to clear, actually, I sent two letters, and the last one was just this week, could they be read into the record, and maybe my questions answered, but I want to clear something up. I went on YouTube and watched the last meeting, and I just think Greg made a mistake. He said that these lots were double the size they have to be, for duplex, they have to be eighty thousand feet, so they're not double the size they have to be. Also, he said that it was approved, it was approved the last time with conditions, I was at the meeting, and the conditions, if, I think if they were met, probably wouldn't be here tonight. Does that make sense?
Well, for some reason, they decided not to go forward with the last.
Well, and what conditions are, I think, like Karen said, a geological behind Butler's house, that they're going to put a retention pond there.
Do you second his comment?
So, I think to say that it was approved is stretching.
This is a letter received by the planning board November twelve. I live at Mount Sterns Road, and would like to address my concerns regarding this development.
Okay, this also went to Sunda, second, or to Sunda, sixteen?
Okay. Do you want this ready to be addressed?
Please.
Thank you. This is obviously a very aggressive plan for a very sensitive area. This site is a tributary to the reservoir, and we are all familiar with the water problems the town has as far as quality and quantity. I am in the butter, and realize that eventually something will be built on the site. While the most recent plan impacts me promptly the least of all the other butters, what will affect me is when I use town water and have to deal with the possible effects of this development has on the water supply. It seems that the current plan is using everything it can to get the maximum amount of units on the site. Rain gardens, for example, are not to be used for control of runoff, but for infiltration purposes, since this site is on glacial tilt, infiltration is dubious at best. Grass depressions aren't even mentioned as a DMP, dust management practice. Common driveways are a way to get as many units on the site as possible. Rattails speak for themselves, many towns don't allow them for obvious reasons. Shared septic systems can be burdensome to one of the homeowners, doesn't have the means to pay. to pay the upkeep. I understand that the granting of common driveways is at the discretion of the town board, and I ask you, is a development of this size located in this very sensitive area what the town wants or needs? Then we have a letter dated December 3rd. At the last meeting on November 14th concerning this development, a few questions were raised. Greg always stated that the eight lots were twice the area required and by right duplex lots. In reading the zoning bylaw 430.1, it states that two family dwellings must be located on a lot containing an area not less than two times that require, required for the erection of a single family dwelling on the same site. Wouldn't that mean 80,000 square feet per duplex? When I did the math, 15.3 acres straight relates into about 83,526 square feet per duplex. This is only achieved through the use of rattails as seen on the plans to get what is barely legal-sized lot for each duplex. Three of the units only achieve the lot size by incorporating a common drive in the calculations. Common driveways are obviously need, are obviously needed to get the, the most units in the smallest space. In a subdivision, you would not be able to use the street when calculating lot size. In addition to the common driveways and rattails, shared septic systems are also used to get the most units. This is, in my opinion, a mathematical exercise to try and max out this very sensitive area. I don't believe this development in any way is in the spirit of the zoning regulations written to protect our town from overdevelopment. Since this is a discretionary permit, I ask that we deny it and have them come back and plan, with a plan that better protects our valuable resources. And finally, we have a letter December 17th. At the last meeting on November 14th concerning this development, a few questions were raised. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection checklist for stormwater standard three recharge states that the infiltration BMP is used to attenuate the flow during storms greater than, or equal to the 10-year 24-hour storm and separation to seasonal high groundwater is less than 4 feet and a mound, mounting analysis is provided. Was a mound analysis submitted? If not, why not, as this appears to be an important consideration in this location? Pretending to be controlled, structured BMP used volume 2, chapter 2, page 23, states that rain gardens are not applicable for controlling the earthquake flow. Grass depressions are not listed as a BMP in any of the data I reviewed online. Are these BMPs designed and applied consistent with the DEP handbook for stormwater? If they are not, why do the town accept this project as proposed and why not require BMPs that are consistent with the DEP handbook?
Thank you.
Would you please?
Sure. I did not misspeak at the last meeting. All of these lots do comply with the zoning as far as the 80,000 square feet. These lots are all existing lots that are greater than 80,000 square feet in size. These are in the R1 zoning district. For an 80,000 square foot lot, you are allowed a duplex on that. That's written in the I-100. I gave a lot of thought to this layout. The original consult by Ted and Tom Klein, that he was going to purchase the property, we looked at what existed out there, and just to kind of read, just to show you, we looked at what was out there, wasn't it, it's, it's eight lots. There's eight two-acre, eight duplex lots, that's what exists. That's what's on record with the assessor's office. You could go out there and build this up, but this is the layout. You can do individual driveways. Mass DOT will allow eight individual curb cuts. Our zoning bylaw has specific controls about access onto Chief Justice Christian Highway. This layout complies with every kind of zoning bylaw. This is a byright plan, doesn't need any special permits. It doesn't need any density relief. It doesn't ask for any variances, this is a byright layout. Complies with the 200-foot setback, that's the legal setback. The 200-foot setback, I've confirmed with the DPW, the town engineer, the head of the water department, the head of the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to our water supply, the situat board of health. I hear, I hear your concern, we will, we will try to revise to a 400-foot setback, but 200 is the legal requirement. This is a byright plan. Looking at this, this is, this is not a good layout. This utilizes the entire site. It's 50, it's over 15 acres in size, you see the amount of disturbance. You see units that are set 20 feet back from the rear of lot line. This is the plan that was created through a HANR that was endorsed by the situat planning. I looked at ways that I could make this better.
Go by that, right? We don't ever indicate on an A and R that these are approved development lots. In fact, we go quite the opposite to say we're not endorsing these as developed properties. So let's not, let's not indicate that the planning board supported when it was put together.
Sure. So the planning board endorsed the A and R lots nonetheless, so building department determines the building, not the planning board. I looked at that and looked at ways I could make it better. Knowing the proximity to the reservoir and knowing that we had excess land area, I looked at, how can I create a buffer zone? That buffer zone, I was able to create by proposing common driveways. With a common driveway, you're allowed to measure your lot with, not parallel with Chief Justice Christian Highway, but you're allowed to measure perpendicular to Chief Justice Christian Highway. That allowed me to take these units, and remember, we had units back here and down here with that 1987 layout, and allowed me to pull them. This unit at its closest point is over 200 feet away from that lot. The clearing from this driveway to the Butler property is in excess of 400 feet, as opposed to the 87 plan. The byright plan is 20 feet under the lot. So I, I pulled the units all up as far as I possibly get them. By doing the common driveways, it allowed me to cut down the number of curb cuts. Again, our bylaw allows for curb cuts, one per lot, Mass DOT allows one per legal lot. So by reducing the number of curb cuts, I was able to reduce the amount of impervious surface associated with the site. And we were able to cluster our buildings. We specifically did not create sprawling backyard areas here. We tried to keep our limit of disturbances close to what we had to for grading purposes to comply with the bylaw. We could cut down the amount of fill, we could pull that limit of grading in if there were allowances for that in the bylaw, but our bylaw specifically requires a four-to-one ratio for grading when you're in the Water Resource Protection District, when other districts in town you're allowed to do up to a two-to-one ratio for grading. So the amount of fill and the limit of disturbance becomes that much bigger in this district because we're trying to create gentler slopes. This layout here, the green space that you see preserves over 55% of the land in its natural condition. There's no regulation at all that requires any preservation or any limit on lot disturbance, but this preserves 55% of the land. Furthermore, my client is voluntarily putting a permanent restriction on the lot line between the abutters and his property. Again, there's no requirement that he do that, but he's permanently putting into these documents that he would do that. So we looked at the stormwater associated list, we had a stormwater permit, and I, I hear the concerns about construction sequencing and erosion control, and I, I want to, I will address those with our next civil, but I really wanted to try to get any final input from the board and try to get you behind the concept here of issuing a special permit for these two driveways. This driveway doesn't require a special permit, but these two driveways do, as they access three lots instead of two. Without the support of that special permit, we would be revising this plan to eliminate and add another curb cut, so that each common driveway would just be a two-lot common driveway, it wouldn't require a special permit. We could eliminate the common driveway at the top of the hill and just do individual byright on those lots. I don't think this is the best utilization, and so prior to making those revised drainage calculations, spending additional peer review money, going through that additional process, I was hoping to gather a little bit of input and a little bit of direction tonight to determine if this is something you can support or whether we should go in a different direction. What I've heard is I've heard you want me to depict the 400-foot setback, and I would do that on the revised plan. You want me to look at if Lot 8 can be revised to get the septic system and at least part of the building on the side of that zone A, and I will certainly look into that. But these are all fully compliant lots, they comply with the 80,000 square feet, Mr. Chesky.
All right, anyone else have a comment? The 200-foot.
Excuse me, could you please identify yourself?
Judy Anderson, 19th century room. The 200-foot setback, is that from the Angela Pond? That?
Yes.
Yes. The edge of the raise, right, once it, if there are any pull raises at the elevation.
Can I just show you from a septic plan that was done on 142 Old Forge Room? And where the wetland mark marker was done?
Okay.
He didn't have those, thank you. But we're here, if we max that little slice, this is 142 Old Forge.
So, I'm sorry, it's just, I, I can't place anything here, so what, what's your point?
I just, I would think that the wetland wouldn't start right on the edge of the pond. I would think that, you know, some of it's already wetland, like, not just the edge of the pond. Like, what is wetland one, like F1? Is that where the wetland marker is? Or where they have to go back by?
Are you talking about on their drawing?
Yeah, on, on that, on this, yeah.
That's, that's the flagged wetland from whoever did this. John Richardson's. Are you asking, where's the wetland on this draw?
Yeah, it, it's at the edge of the pond.
Why don't you point it out?
So in this, in this case here, the wetland is right down here at the bottom of the page, right here, in this finger from this property. And it runs over here to the 3A. That wetland was delineated by Tetra Tech Engineering, they were hired by the town situat to analyze the reservoir. And that line was reviewed and is currently the DNP.
And that's the right, the edge of the pond?
So typically, there's the, the edge of the water delineates the pond, but then off of the edge of the water is a, is a vegetated area that would have wetland vegetation in it. That line represents the edge of that wetland vegetation.
Okay.
Anything else? All right. How does the board feel about moving forward with this? Rebecca? Well. Excuse me? I don't think we're ready to move forward with this tonight. No, 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 I'm not talking about moving forward, I'm talking about, are we willing to consider not going back to the drawing board? They have agreed to twist the two houses at the top, two units at the top, they want to look into the feasibility of trying to stay out of, to keep the septic system out of the 4-foot buffer.
400.
400. Okay? So, do we want to let them come up with a new plan? Or do we want them to go back to the drawing board and come up with something totally different?
I don't think that's our fault.
No, it isn't, but they are looking for direction from us about where they want to go.
It's one of the, I mean, I agree, I understand. The difficult thing to start the plan is that, is that extra step, then you have to then get a finding, and start the plan. And the easiest thing, the easiest thing for us to do, not the right thing, the easiest thing for us to do is to go to one of these other plans and eliminate that, and then you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to make that decision. But I actually think the right decision is that plan or more of a version of that one. I just think, conceptually, from every perspective, three driveways is always better than five. If we do five, that takes you, I don't, it's facetious, so it takes you up the hook, you don't have to make the decision, because we can do it as a matter of fact, but from a design perspective, from a planning perspective.
And also, considering, I think, everybody agreed that this is the better industry plan.
But that's, so.
But if we can, if we can. Universe isn't just industry plans.
I understand that you have this as a matter of right in terms of your development. And I think our position here is trying to make this the highest and best use that we can do. So I'm trying to find out from you guys is, do we want to continue forward with common driveways? How do you feel about that? I mean, I'm the one saying that if they can tweak this, if they can make it work, if they have enough, you can never, you don't know who's there or what kind of use. There is no way to ensure that some person who lives there is going to behave the way this poster. We can't do that. We're not the brother.
Which is good, though, is as a condominium association, with the association forcing, so there would be some internal pleasing. That would, that would help.
It would help, but it wouldn't.
As opposed to any individual, which is giving you the wrong perspective.
Ben?
I, I agree with Tony O'Brien here that, like, conceptually, from a design and planning perspective, that this makes the most sense, but what I, like, is, could we, I mean, I'm assuming that these buildings are like, are they right to the setback extent right now on the lots? Like, how could we tighten things up even further is what I'm wondering, to even further limit disturbance and potentially, potentially, I guess, like, really push the envelope to on, on our stormwater practice, like, perhaps we could evaluate porous pavement for all of the paving to really like, what, what I want is like, this, if this project gets going and they're clearing, this is going to be one that, there's going to be big, uh, public outcry.
Oh, huge.
Well, so what I, what I, especially given our water situation, so what I would like to work through with this design phase is come up with something that when people really stop and think about this, they say, you know, we don't, we would have liked it to be woods, you know, but it's products, right? So what I would like to see, though, is that when people go by and you explain what was done here, they say, you know, the, the people in this town are starting to get, you know, they're, they're thinking about the future and they're thinking about how we can, you know, develop some of these sensitive pieces of land, which is inevitable, in a way that's going to work for everybody. So I guess that's how I feel about it. I don't, unfortunately, have any, like, concrete points on like, how we get there at this juncture. And then my only other thing is just dotting our i's and crossing our t's on that hydrogeologic study to make sure there isn't, in fact, a tributary or something, because I would hate for that to come out later on during appeals period or something. I think that maybe that element of survey should be looked into a little further.
Stuart?
Well, I tend to agree with Ben on the notion of, you know, this is a much better option than those options, you know, the hope that that's not really an option anybody wants to do, you know, from the perspective of developing, living in this town. I still think the, the primary objective should be, how can we maximize that, that buffer around, around the pond? And I agree with Ben that if there's, if we don't really know what, what the background existing condition is, we should make sure we do so that there aren't any other surprises here. condition is, we should make sure we do so that there aren't any other surprises here. I still think you probably have some challenges with those driveways, even 3A, just because I think, you know, 3A is a difficult road to drive onto. But I think my primary focus would be more around how we push back from the pond and preserve as much natural vegetation that would provide that ongoing sort of buffer for drainage and for the whole watershed, basically. And, you know, it's kind of an interesting thing in that if you look at kind of the satellite view of this area, that whole side, sort of the northern side of the pond and reservoir, has a pretty significant buffer all around it. You go to the other side, you have a lot of houses, like, right up there. And I think we did the sort of more of the right thing on the north side from the south side. So my encouragement would be to try to find a way to keep that sort of concept with this piece of property. And, you know, somebody picked 400 feet. I don't know if that's the right number for not, but certainly better than 200.
Ben? Well, I'm not going to eat this to death, but this is a very public access oriented event in the city. The blowback that we get from big projects, when they come in, they blow down all the trees, you don't want, they're getting a lot of telephone, you do stuff, I mean, it's crazy. This is a really public event. If you can treat that first or third, whatever it was, a little bit, and you want to be your neighbor, I mean, you want it to be the name, so doing the right thing, you're doing the thing that you have the right to, two different things. The easiest thing in the world to do is to do the right thing. So if you can come back, I mean, I'm not, that's against my community of common driveway.
I was just thinking about what you were saying there. Is there any way to, like, that, the last lock down, the last three there, to more line them up, kind of on the uphill side, and sort of keep even a bigger buffer there?
Potentially there is, I would imagine.
I wasn't even saying keep the orientation, but turn them all on that side.
Yeah, I think the decision to go forward with common driveway is, is obviously that ours, there's, from my standpoint, I think the common driveway affords certain benefits that well, well beyond what you could do with multiple more permits. I think it's the same effort that you're putting forth to maximize, if you cannot maximize, but to effectively maximize the number of houses that you have. We get the same challenge, except we're looking to protect the water. I think the question becomes is where you go with this, is once you take the view what the group got here from the right of us, as well as there's, the letters have provided some pretty good, pretty succinct information in their lives, I don't know if you got to what I mean, but I guess that you do that. So I think the question becomes is, well, hearing what you've heard, is there still an opportunity for you to go forward and come back up and get a plan?
And I also think, and I'm assuming that this, once we get to, you know, there's many various views, and you are, and also, I assume, so, you know, there's a little duck, it's kind of there, but I mean, the whole purpose of this really, to get exactly this, that, the, you know, certain things that obviously you expressed it, and we were trying to express the concern with buffer, we were working on that, and then we're just coming here and hearing that everyone's concerned, you know, create close construction disturbance, far away from that, the weather, great a buffer possible, just with a little creative thinking, again, engineers draw squares. Can we do something more than that, can we be a little bit, we understand that, we're certainly, we're certainly going to do that, and I think what we're going to use, yard properties in this design versus those others, you know, if we can use this concept of three driveways versus four, five, eight, we can find who to plan, my, I told you, boys, we septic for that. And we understand the pressure from the town. One of the things that we, I go very, very easily, but I think is very important, the chairperson was, so it doesn't look like somebody of the things it's on. It's not, you do it in a fit, one thing, so it's not, it's not like somebody of the things that, you know, we all see.
The worst thing you could ever possibly do is to go in there and click on it. Done. And that has happened, and it's a terrible thing. It's an absolute terrible thing. So if you can be the wrong way to...
Pick the best out of three. The question becomes is, are you going to...
We'll make that.
Can you make it better? And I think that you can, and I think you have to keep the buffer long, 3A, and, you know, push, do you use side distances? However, I think the less intrusive it is close to 3A, the better you're going to do, because the first tree that comes down, they'll be helping it. And we don't want that. We really don't. We want, you just come up with something that, for all of us, is the highest and best use of what we can do here. Okay? All right. Thank you very much.
Just before we leave that, I just want to build it through kind of fairly lengthy list here. I just want to make sure you guys got all that. You know, this is kind of a high-level concept, but there are a bunch of specific items. Okay.
So, we had preliminary talked about, if we go to another set of plans after tonight's meeting, are you still on track for getting those plan set in and for January 23rd? That means the plan set has to be in by approximately January 9th, so that there's adequate time for engineering peer review and for the board to have a conference.
Yes, we can have plans.
Are we going to need more money for engineering peer review?
Would that include this sort of survey, or would that be sort of...
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to reach out to a man at the DEP that comes down to Situate, I'd have him visit a couple other sites, he's a hydrogeologist for DEP, and see if he can lock the site for a tributary.
I'm going to accept the applicant request to continue the public carry for the common driveway, the special permit and stormwater, the 443, yeah, 461 Chief Justice Highway, until January 24, 2020, 8:00 PM, and continue to type the actual requirement with the town court until February 14, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All right. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is public hearing, scenic road, public shade trees. Do we have something that we need to be ready to record? Here's the public hearing notice. Here's that.
We'll get it.
We'll get it, okay. In accordance with Mass General laws, Chapter 40, Section 15C, the scenic road act and Mass General laws, Chapter 87, Section 3, Public Shade Trees, the planning boards, interconjunction with the tree wardens, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, December 19, 2019, at 8:00 PM, in the Josephine Norton Emergency Operations Center of the Public Safety Complex, 800 Chief Justice, Pushing Highway, Situate, Mass. The subject of the hearing is removal of approximately 18 linear feet of stone wall and removal of an eight-inch diameter oak tree, a 32-inch diameter oak tree, in the public driveway of Grove Street, for proposed common driveway up to 115 Grove Street and a new single-family home for applicant Henry Holmes. Approximately 26.5 new feet of stone wall will be added. Work is located on the census map, 36-2-2 and 36-2-5. Plans are available for review in the planning board office, Town Hall 600, Chief Justice, Pushing Highway, Situate, butters and other interested parties for 115 Street 10.
There's also, at the same time, a sidekick, administrative review, meaning on a common driveway, same book out there. And Mr. Morris, and the sidekick is...
Steve York.
Who has permission to represent Mr. Morris.
Yes, I am.
Yes, I am.
All right, gentlemen.
Good evening. As was just right on the public record, this is a hearing for common driveway and scenic road permit, as well as we filed a stormwater permit. Property's located at 115 Grove Street. Looking at the plan, Grove Street is at the bottom of the page here. The two lots that would be served are the existing house here at 115 Grove Street and then a new single-family house lot just to the south of number 115. The proposal is to come into the common driveway, right now, the house is accessed with a gravel driveway that comes off the road, but we would locate a new common driveway to service both lots. The common driveway is 14 feet wide, paved, it's a total of 153 feet in length from the beginning to the end. It does provide for emergency vehicle turnaround with a 20-foot by 30-foot turnout at the end of the common driveway. It would provide access to the existing house and then the proposed house. The proposed house, we proposed a stormwater system which would handle the roof runoff associated with the house that would be directed into a series of subsurface leaching chambers in the backyard. And then we proposed along the southern lot line here, a grass depression which would accept runoff from the front yard, or accept runoff coming off of the driveway as well, prior to discharge at its east of the end, where it would then flow over land to wetlands at the back of the property. We presented this to the Conservation Commission, we have a continued hearing with them, but we are proposing to do plantings within this depression, it won't be just an open grass depression, we would have plantings in it. Where the driveway is located, there are two trees, an eight-inch and a 32-inch oak tree. I took a couple of pictures today, and I've identified them on, here, I pass these to you for your review. There's a total of 17 trees along the frontage of this property that are located in the layout, so this is removal of two of those 17 trees. Also is the removal of a portion of the stone wall along the frontage. We would propose to remove 18 feet of stone wall to allow access for the new driveway, and then we would close up the existing driveway access. The existing driveway access is about 26 and a half feet in width, so we'd be replacing that stone wall along the frontage. We have received several review comments, they're doing the peer review on the stormwater. We will be submitting a revised plan to address those comments, but we wanted to get comments from the board and the public prior to making those revisions. We need to perform some additional soil testing out there and make some revisions to the drainage office.
All right, so late this afternoon, we received, we received one comment from Mike Green Tree Warden, saying that he did not want the eight-inch and the 32-inch oak taken down. We received a second comment from Mike this afternoon. I guess he got a visit from the developer today, and he said he wouldn't be opposed to taking down the oak trees if they were to replant two four-inch diameter oak trees on either side of the driveway and supply the town with six four-inch diameter oak trees, so that he can use them on other scenic roads. So that comment came in late this aft, late this afternoon. That relates to the scenic road hearing. As relates to common driveway, I guess, get, get Conservation is looking at this, they will be meeting early January, but it's likely to be continued again. This is also a Water Resource Protection District, Zone 2. They do need soil testing, they need a bunch of drainage calculations and information that they need to address. I guess, I'm a little confused if it's a rain guard or a grass depression, so I think they need to clarify that. Also, the existing barn that is over here, does that have any, any type of stormwater benefits that go with that? Because that was, that was applied for, for a stormwater permit, then the stormwater permit kind of went away because it was 24.7% impervious, but now we're introducing a common driveway, so we have two lots that stormwater is really cumulative. And I think if they had some benefits at the one time there were stormwater features on that plan, I think we need to know if those have been installed.
Response as far as the barn is concerned is, I think that Henry Isbell installed infiltrators for roof runoff on the barn. I think that showed in the original plan, and what happened was he removed a large portion of the existing driveway which was impervious, and turned, actually dug it out, turned it in, loosened the soil up, and revegetated that on top, so that he came underneath the thresholds before this was a project with the additional lot. And we did mention Karen, that we would be taking care of that in the future when the new lot came in, so he is intending on doing infiltrators over there as well.
Okay, all right. Ultimately, there will be three structures on this property, correct?
You say ultimately, there's three structures, there will be three structures if this new home is constructed.
And how does one access the original?
So, the existing house, 115, you know, has the detached barn to it. You would come in the common driveway right here, and this is the paved access to the barn and the house.
Presently, the existing driveway is to the south of the proposed driveway.
You got the existing driveway is right in here. So the existing driveway comes in just, just to the right-hand side of what's proposed here, comes in right here, and hooks right into here.
Into the, into the existing structure.
Correct.
But where am I missing how it sort of goes into this? This is just a walkway?
To where? The house.
Yeah.
To the house center, walkway coming into the driveway, the turnaround is actually almost behind the house, it's more towards the barn, and then there is a walk that goes up through the house that was existing for years.
So there's really no driveway per se with the house? It's part of the barn?
Well, the barn is the garage for the house.
I...
So...
The barn looks like a house, but that's beside the point.
Again, as far as access is concerned, he parks in front of the barn, not in front of the house.
Fine, thank you. Without clarification. All right, in terms of trees, one minute, you're going to keep them, you can still keep them, and the next thing we do, we take them down.
If you want, I'll explain this rather than break if I can, okay?
I can hardly wait to see.
Yeah, well, it's, when you, has anybody got to the site and seen it all, run by? Okay. Normally, when you think of a scenic road, you've got stone walls on both sides and you've got trees that are in the street. If you go out there, you notice the... If you go out there, you notice the trees, the two trees that we want to take down are actually behind the stone wall. So, any, anybody who's passing by and looking at a scenic road, it appears as though these trees behind the wall are actually owned by the owner of the property. So it's a little bit of an unusual situation because the property line is about seven feet behind the stone wall rather than at the stone wall like you'd normally have on the, on an old scenic road in town. So, and I'm the culprit. I went and I talked to Mr. Green and because of the design of what we're doing and what we're trying to do with the driveway, we're, we're being forced to move the driveway uphill a little bit to fit between two septic systems because we've got to get the swale on the south side of the property because of all the stormwater regulations. So the closer we can put the swale to the southerly boundary, the more water we can catch in that swale. And if we vegetate it, and I'm sure the neighbors probably behind me, I don't know, I haven't seen them yet, but we will put in whatever we have to for vegetation in there between the two new homes, but to catch the maximum amount of runoff to get it into that swale and direct it back, we've got to have that on the south side of the house. So it's pushing things up towards the center of the lot and the two septic systems that we have there, if we have to do something funny with the driveway itself and have curves in to get in and miss the house that's proposed, one, it's not going to be an attractive driveway. Two, we're going to end up with retaining walls on one, if not both of the, one of the septic systems. Whichever way we go, we'll end up with a stone wall around the septic system itself. And that's just for grading purposes to be able to sneak the driveway through. The way we have it right now, I think pretty much it's just graded down to the driveway on both septic systems, which in my opinion is a lot more attractive than having more retaining walls up there.
Are you willing to, um, put in those two trees and then come up with a few more trees?
Yeah. And, and to, I mean, again, he, he wrote, you know, his first letter, I know that Karen got that said, you know, look, we really don't want to lose this tree. And personally, I feel like if we're willing, and I said to him, I go, what do we have to do without changing all the plans to take this, the one larger tree? He wasn't worried about the small tree, but the one larger tree. I said, there's got to be somewhere in town that you can use more trees that will be more attractive on a scenic road, whether it's right in front of here or it's somewhere else that they can put the trees where they're much more visible. And at the time, he had stated that four trees might be nice, now I'm understanding it's six trees, but if it makes the project work, then the six trees work. And we're, we're obviously willing to work with you guys to, we think this is the best plan, so we're, we're hoping that the board will be supportive of it and we'll do what we can to mitigate it. As well as with Conservation, they're asking for more plantings behind the house as well, so we're going to be doing buffer zone plantings back there. But everything that's on the plan is there for a particular reason and we're trying to be away from the wetlands as far as we can and handle all the regulations that the town has and hopefully this will work and we'll get the support.
Okay. Holmes, we're going to handle the trees this first public hearing. Seene work. So, any comments from the board about the trees?
Was, did, did Mr. Green or anybody do an assessment of the health of the, of the tree? Particularly the 32 inch?
He didn't do an assessment, but I can tell you, I went up today because I was trying to take some pictures of the tree, which is a little bit difficult. There are dead branches on the tree, but I wouldn't say it's, I don't say it's a dying tree, but if you look up in the tree, there are numerous dead branches on the tree. I wouldn't say that's a reason to say take it or don't take it. I think it's the benefits that we're offering the other trees, I'm not going to, it's, it's not lotted and falling over or anything like that.
Sure. Is there no way to save the one big tree and do?
He had no issue with the smaller tree. It really was the talk around that one big tree.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is there no way to move the driveway a little bit and avoid that tree?
What's going to happen is it's going to push into the front yard of the, the new home and it's going to force us to take the septic system, push the septic system further towards the swale, which gets us further south on the property. And that's where, like I said, we balance all the stormwater stuff that has to be put in the plan. It, I mean, this is the best that we could come up with and we figured we're really losing one tree and offering to give back whatever, six trees or whatever it is.
Eight.
Yeah, I know, maybe only put two more.
All right, um.
So what are the trees below the tree bag?
Yeah. And they can use them wherever they, I mean, he has places he can use them, but he didn't mention to me exactly where he wanted them, but he said it would be nice to have the trees.
So are you providing them and installing in the other locations?
No, they'll, they'll install them, they just want us to put it in the tree bag itself because they don't know where they want to use them. And the other ones, the two that are on, that are going to go in front of this property, I would probably meet with him before those two were installed because if you did go out and look at this, there's not much distance between the stone wall and the actual pavement and if we put an oak tree in there, you'll be rebuilding the road because the roof system's just going to get too big. So it, it almost makes sense to have it further back and unfortunately, that stone wall, if it was seven feet further back, it would have been fine. We could have put them right in front of this particular property, but as Greg said, there's like 17 trees that are out there in the later.
Rebecca?
I have another question.
And as well, over the stone wall with it here.
Okay, and you're going to fix the stone wall and make it wonderful for this? Okay. Any comments?
Still, Ben had another question.
Stone, stone wall, rubble of the wall.
Ben had a question?
I was just a comment, a question, because there's kind of an old landscape design adage that goes, the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. Uh, and I think that obviously, you know, I think four-inch is good because, you know, I read by less spec, specify two and a half inch calipers for street trees and things like that, so I think four-inch is generous, um, in terms of the sizing for a new planting. Uh, we, you know, there, a new plant like that obviously isn't going to make up for, I guess, the services and kind of the overall look and feel of like a large mature, mature tree on a, on a scenic road, but I, I think that if, if, if the tree warden says that, you know, six can work, then I think that I can go along with that. The one thing I would think we might want to get more specific about is right now it just says oak tree and I think it might be beneficial to specify a particular species of oak tree and try to match the native, because that's, that's a native tree, it's on a straight tree.
I assume he'll tell us what he wants.
Yeah, but I just, I think maybe that, maybe in, in this agreement, maybe we can somehow stipulate that we don't want some, just, you know, something that will match the, and this can be worked out later, but you, you get what I'm getting at?
Would you say like red oak or approved equivalent?
Yeah, I think something, yeah, like, uh, and, and particularly like a straight native species, I don't think we want to plant, uh, I think the purpose of scenic road act isn't necessarily to have like cultivars or, you know.
The only thing I would say is I don't know what type of oak tree there is there now, but again, if it's something that we can chat with the tree warden about and give him what he wants, I think we're okay with that.
Yeah, and maybe like.
It might be, I don't know, it's a white oak, it might be a white oak, I don't know. I just, I hate to tie into something and have him, you want us to do something different. I'll have another chat.
And the only thing I would say is that you see a lot of trees that are planted and then just doesn't take care of, you know, so we.
Well, I hope the town will take care of the trees that we give them.
I mean, the people who live in houses above water, it's occasional, and that's, that is a problem, that's a huge issue. Spend all this money and nobody warrants them, and God doesn't want it.
I presume you have, a, a warranty or something, true.
And, and again, as, as, as we do developments, if it's going to be a new house going in there, it's obviously not going to be the inexpensive house. And if they're at the entrance to driveway or if you would like to have them out there, I'm sure that there's going to be more stuff planted around the house after it's cleaned out in there. So I would, I would assume that the individual that's going to be moving into that house will take care of the vegetation. Again, we do as developers, while we're building stuff, we've got to pass it over to homeowner at some point and hope that they're going to do the same thing. As far as the town trees, I, I hope they'll take care of it.
All right, any comments from the public?
Well, I'm going to, hi, I'm Jane Churchill and I live, um, at 120 Grove Street, so I will be looking out at all of this. And I have been very disappointed, I'm going to be honest, with what I've seen gone over, gone on over there the past three or four years. Um, I don't really know Mr. Holmes, I've met him once. I've heard that he was going to make it beautiful, but the barn does not look like a barn to me. And I'm just nervous that, you know, I have to protect my home and the value of my home. What am I going to look across at? Because the past few years, I, I mean, I've picked up some shrubs and stuff in front because you guys haven't. My husband and I take very good care, not you, of our property. And I went over there because we've had so much wind this summer, there were big winds, so I grabbed them myself and put them inside so cars coming up Grove Street, Grove Street do not hit them. And it's, it's been like a big secret over there and I do not want to see and look across. I don't know what this new home is going to look like, I don't know what the design is, but I have a lot of concerns about this project because I feel as though all along, it hasn't been what, some of the neighbors, there's a group of us neighbors that are really concerned about it and what's going to happen there because.
Can I address that?
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Holmes has not been extremely healthy and the reason he's not here now is he had a major cancer operation. The intent of doing this and creating the additional lot is so that Mr. Holmes can end up selling the property and he's going to probably move along. So part of doing this, um, some of the proceeds of this are going to be used to enhance and finish what he has over at his place so that the barn will be complete. Uh, but I think from a planning board perspective, as far as a individual homeowner, the only thing I can say is I think that they're going to be happier once this is done because the area will be cleaned up. And all I can do is apologize for Mr. Holmes and, um, and say he should have had it done, but he ran into troubles along the way. So there will most likely be a new owner of that property shortly.
And this barn, can I ask about the barn? Like, what is above that barn? I mean, that's a pretty big square footage above there.
It's, it's a massive barn, I'm not going to hold, uh, I'm not going to hold that back. And I can tell you what happened was when Mr. Holmes originally put the barn up, his intent was to put an excavator inside, which he had for his business and I think a six, ten-wheel dump truck or six, I don't know, a ten-wheel dump truck? And tried to put them inside the building so that he could store them inside rather than outside on his property. And he wanted to have a woodworking shop on the second floor of the property. And again, I think, you know, he got himself into some trouble and that's not going to happen. He sold the excavator, he sold the truck and he has a big barn, he just wants to finish it so that it's cleaned up. So that's, that's the story of the barn. There's no other intent with that. He was just, he's a woodworker himself and he was going to have a woodworking shop up on the second floor.
Is the barn connected to water or septic?
No, no, there's no bathroom in the barn or anything like that. There's no, and, and again, there's no, um, there's no proposal to do an accessory dwelling or anything like that, and I know there was some talk about this earlier, but I just hearsay. If Mr. Holmes or somebody else chose to apply the planning board for an accessory permit, which he has not done and he does not have an intent right now to do that, okay, he very well could come back to the board and ask for that if his septic system would handle it and if he paid for the water tie-in and if he had two additional parking spots, he would meet the criteria for that or a future owner could potentially come in front of you for a special permit and ask for it, but that's not what's on the table.
I will sit down.
Me?
What?
I mean, it is, I know, I know you're concerned, some of you are concerned, but, I mean, look at, my husband's upstairs, he had heart attack, we still keep our property nice. You know, I get out there and I help my husband, I mow the lawn, I work over 40 hours a week. I see other people over across there, other people can get on a ride or lawnmower and pick up shrubs, you know, but he has all these people over there, I'm actually trucks come in and out, I was very concerned about big dump trucks. I don't want to be home at 4:00 in the afternoon after I work hard all day and see big dump trucks come in. I do not move to City of Mass on scenic road to live across from a business that are comings and gone, so I do have concerns. So hopefully that business is done. And I was very cordial, I was probably one of the first people to walk over and introduce myself to this particular people because you can ask Sean, I did it when my first move, I've always been neighborly. I did not find this group of people over there very neighborly towards us. It seemed like a big secret and I'm getting to the point in my life that I will speak up and that's why I came to this meeting because I have concerns.
Well, I appreciate that. Okay, and I think you're going to see some changes.
Okay.
Okay, you're going to see some changes. Anyone else?
Sean, 607 First Crash Road, I, Henry. Um, so, so Henry originally told me when he looked in, introduced himself, he's going to build a barn, he said, that's great, that would probably improve the, the piece of property where, um, Jerry Dwight had lived there for many, many, many years. Home was worn down. But anyway, what Henry put up was not a barn, it's far from a barn. He told me he was not going to run his business out of the house, but it looked like that's where he was going. And then a big truck showed up and now, I mean, I, I can't go in there and look, but it looks like he's trying, was trying to build a multi-family unit there. This big garage turned into, it looked like, uh, units are gone. Yeah, that's just from looking at it from our property. So, I, I, I agree with Jane, our concern is we just don't trust him. He hasn't done what he said he was going to do. So, plants may look great, but we, we just don't know, all right? That's, that's, that's our, that's our concern. Quite honestly, I mean, for, for the trees, um, a lot of those trees really seem broken, probably could come down.
They're coming down.
To be honest, to be honest with you.
Branches.
I don't know about these two particular trees, but there is another tree further up the road, a much bigger tree.
Huge.
That really, um, a, a little did fall off of that tree, hit the passing car in the way street, so there, there are suspicions with the tree there. So I'm not opposed to the trees, I'm opposed to the wall, I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned with what ends up happening, what.
Property, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, two single-family houses get rid of the barn, I don't know, because it doesn't look like a barn. It sounds like, it sounds like it's going to be turned into a parking garage. That's what it sounds like.
One of the things that's going to happen here tonight, Mr. Karen, we will probably will close the public hearing on scenic roadway and Mr. Joe Glenn, too. He's advocated for Mr. Holmes, will deal with the trees. The rest of it is going to be continued because then you have Conservation and a few other things, so we will.
China, just one second, will you say that? Conservation's not going to close their hearing until the stormwater is taken care of by you guys because they want to make sure that the stormwater's okay. All right, so, so that's, and I don't know if you went to the Conservation meeting or not, I was actually away, but, so when you go, logistically, they want, Conservation wants the plan to act on the stormwater and then they'll handle the stuff that they have.
And, and that's what will happen, that, that means it's going to be.
She just commented that, that it will leave.
It's going to be a while when we revise plans, et cetera.
We get that, and the reason the plan hasn't been revised is like Greg said earlier, if we can get the driveway where it is, where we think is the best location, which the tree was the only issue we had, if the planning board agrees with that, Greg can now address all the comments that the consultant has. We didn't want to do it and then have everybody say, you, you can't take the tree at all. We want you to move the driveway and it changes the septic system, it changes everything.
You took care of that today, so here we go. All right, I can be continued. I will close the scenic road at public hearing and approve the removal of approximately 18 linear feet of stone wall in the right-of-way of Grove Street for access for a new common driveway. Location and the opening on the plan is loud.
No, you're not reading right now. I'll put a second one in there. And there's, I know you're going to say, well, probably, period of who's.
All right. You have several of them, don't think about it. I think that's what you're going to do. All right. I want to close the scenic road at, at public hearing and approve the removal of approximately 18 linear feet of stone wall in the right-of-way of Grove Street for access for new common driveway as shown on the plan. The two existing trees in the public right-of-way can be removed subject to two four-inch caliber trees being planted, one on either side of the new driveway prior to a building permit being obtained. In addition, the only show supply the town with six four-inch caliber oak trees to replenish other scenic roadways. The trees shall be provided prior to obtaining a building permit for any dwelling. Proven provision of the trees shall be provided to the town building, town player and the building commissioner prior to obtaining a building permit. No additional stone wall shall be disturbed unless approved by the planning board. The stones removed from existing stone wall shall be used to fill in the existing opening when the. for the existing driveway access. The advocate will notify the town planer forty-eight hours before the construction commences and when the access is fully completed. Photographic documentation of the condition of the wall shall be submitted to the town planer prior to removal of any stones and after the wall has been rebuilt. Should photographic evidence not be supplied, the approval will be denied void. This approval is continuing upon all federal, state, local, and local permits in the claim for the project. Is there a second?
Second.
Where's the comment? All those...
I have one comment.
Yes.
Just in terms of trees, the two trees that get planted here, I would love to make sure we have, you know, like a one-year guarantee that you're going to take care of them for the year.
Well, I know my trees have a guarantee, right?
So...
And then you need oak trees.
Yeah.
Oak trees. I'll put a second in the...
I also want a comment. I also, for our discussion earlier, I wonder if we could add maybe something along the lines of oak trees, but species and cultivar, in parentheses, straight species preferred to be determined by the tree warden in consultation with town planner and property owner.
I got the last half. As long as the tree warden says it's okay. I don't know what the first part you said was.
Basically just that we want to try to match the existing species. And that we also want to match the straight species genetics. I don't want to get into horticulture, but you can take my word for it. We want to match as closely as we can the species of tree, that's it.
And I understand that on this particular site, the reason I say to leave it up to the tree warden is if he wants to put these other trees somewhere else, let's let him pick what he wants.
Or if somebody wanted oak trees.
Yeah, I'm just going to put what he said.
And then he came over, he said to me this afternoon, he said, "Oak trees."
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Whatever type of oak, I don't know how many types of oak trees there are, but whatever the tree warden wants, that's all given.
All right.
I think you were speaking to the two that have gotten replaced here, right?
Yeah, those will be, those will place that type of tree.
We don't know yet.
Oh, there's six.
The two to be placed on site will be the same as the one that's coming down. The other ones will be at the discretion of the tree warden.
All right. Do I have a second or a minute?
I'll give it.
Bye. Okay. We're going to continue. Common driveway is subject to permanent stormwater.
Is there any questions that anybody has now regarding the common driveway itself that you may be able to address, other than just the technical stuff that Greg is going to do with the consultant?
Well, I think the site is very, very tight. And I think that, I think the site is very tight. And it's a squish to put all that in with the development. This is sitting upon a development right next door, a house right next door. So I just think they ought to consider that.
Yeah, I would say I'm worried about this little swell or whatever you've got here. You get heavy storm and it could evolve. It becomes a puddle in this homeowner's backyard, which motivates the homeowner at some point just to kind of fill it over, right? So I'm just worried about that. That looks like you're just creating a little pond here, you know, so...
We're not going to create a pond. That's going to be a swell, it's going to pick up the water in the front yard and direct it around the back. And again, it's being designed to meet the regulations that are in place for the stormwater that we have, but it's being directed to a wetting in the rear of the project.
So it needs to be...
I would assume that the consultant...
Water resource protection district requirements for his own tail.
It just looks a little flat and it looks like it's, you know, it's retained. So what's the, what's the outfall elevation from that?
It retains about four inches of water from our state. It's to provide, it's provide TSS removal, ninety percent TSS removal of the driveway, W R P. So that was the purpose of it.
So for this, for this, so there's the conveyance of water, just through overlap flow degrading or...
Just through overlap flow of the grain. And then it goes into that rain garden, and then the rain garden overtops at the back at the eastern end and flows to the wetting area.
So, but, so what it is, it's an infiltration B M P, this rain garden swale.
We're not taking credit for any infiltration credit with it. We are... We're just for retention, though.
So that's just from the roof, correct, leaders who are dealing with your infiltration?
So maybe the drawings could be clarified in the end, what's the rain garden, what's the shallow depression swell, et cetera? It's a little confusing on the...
Yeah, and also just, I'm pretty sure like a conveyance, if that's just a conveyance swale, I don't think it needs to have a setback from the property line or mounting analysis, but if there was going to be some sort of infiltration, would that be required for the property line?
We're not proposing any infiltration under that area.
That's just what I'm clarifying, because that's what I see the concern with, the proximity of the property line.
Yep.
You're doing the stormwater analysis at this point, so we'll see all the back, all the calculations.
And they already have one round of comments from our peer review, so they have a number of comments to address from the peer review.
We have no problem, you know, working with a peer review consultant. We just wanted to make sure that the driveway location was going to work. Now go get it.
I need to accept the application for us to continue the public meeting for the common driveway recycling and you said you'd do a stormwater, or want to keep Gro Street until February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at seven p.m. And to continue to tie the actual provider with the child court for March thirteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give it.
Bye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I get your comments that you wanted, um...
For what?
With the wording for the...
Oh, you can do it, but I can't...
That's right, that's right. Okay, we now have continuing discussions, sure reduction for deer and salmon. I see that you have a neighbor. It's just nice to see you all here this evening. All right, we will begin with this.
Mark McSherry, McSherry, please.
Your honor. Terrence Kedesi, your comment.
Hi, Ken. So last week you asked the hearing to be continued so we could get you some photographic pictures of what existed out there right now because we were talking about work that hadn't been complete or that the deer had eaten some of the species out from that. So indeed, I sent you all electronically pictures from what was out there, but I would pass these out to the board. This is the picture of the drain that was just installed in the front, the drain that was just installed in the front. And I went out there yesterday with shovel, car, with D P W. The water was flowing over, over from here, over the curb because the whole yard drain was all blocked. He had to take shovels to try to clear that out. These are the tension basin, basin two in the back. And in the back, there's the planting that you can see where some of the arborvitae have been eaten by deer. As you see, there's a lot of standing water in the basins. Basin is supposed to drain within seventy-two hours. I don't know, this was like forty-eight hours after the rain event from last weekend. And then it rained on Tuesday, so we couldn't, we weren't able to tell if the basins are draining within seventy-two hours. So you asked them to come back to discuss the planting and discuss some of the work that had to be done.
Well, there was a laundry list of things that needed to be done. And we need to know when they're going to be done.
We had our engineer peer review go out there. They submitted a list of items in November that hadn't been done. And so they wanted a sure reduction based on that list. And based on that list, our consulting engineer reviewed it and came up with the cost of what he thought. And so at that, then they wanted to come in and ask you, ask the board, if they thought that, excuse me, additional planting should be put in the back to make it look like the plan, but because the deer had eaten some of them. So that's kind of where they left off last week.
And I think we left that particular discussion about whether we can plant or not, that the community was going to go back and sort of talk about that. There was some who said they just should get rid of them, but not that everybody here, you know, everybody who lives there would represent.
And the big issue, I think, the overriding issue, from what I heard last week's gathering, was treaty acceptance. They want this treaty accepted. And the way things are shaping up right now, it does not look as if, it won't be accepted at the upcoming town meeting because there is, again, this laundry list of what needs to be done. And the concern among the homeowners is the plowing. And one of the things that was stated last week by the homeowners, they're paying taxes to the town situant and yet they can't get there to throw the plow back to the town situation. And my sense is true that, you know, I think you all might want to really consider plowing this subdivision in this coming year. I think that it's important for these people, they bought your houses, paid you, and I think that there's a responsibility here, y'all, to figure out, get the, get the plow and then work on what needs to be done. This has to be finished. It's taken much too long.
On the timing, you know, project has taken longer than we all... There was a house that commenced and then did not get finished. And there was some homeowners and difficulties or whatever. So that delayed things and it was the reluctance to finish the road with top coat to the construction vehicles. So we had to say, up until last year, during the whole construction, developer has plowed the road and not chugged back that cost. You know, at a certain point, we had to turn the road over to the homeowners association. You know, with the hope to get it done during the summer and fall, given that the top coat put on. So we're close, but we do have a few things here that are on the letter to Karen and then Peter Palmieri's reply. So we have had discussions with the trustees of the homeowners association about chipping in for some plowing, so we're working on that process for them. The general share with the town told a lot of money, including the money for the top coat that they had. So that's our request really tonight is to reduce that share to a reasonable amount with input from the consulting agency. With regard to the trees, we're willing to replant them. We think that based on where they are, which is at the very back of the property, the chances of being damaged again is high unless we put a fence around the trees. The species of arborvitae that are put there, the so-called green giant arborvitae, which was recommended by the landscaper and the town planer at the time, is a species that was, you know, deer resistant. And we actually planted that same species at the front of the development, at the entrance, and they have flourished. The reality, I guess, is if you, if you plant in areas that are a little less populated, a little less, whether it's cars, lights, people, whatever, if they're hungry enough, the deer will actually eat the green giants because they've definitely done. So we're willing to put the money aside to do it again. And I think what we propose is to put some kind of a barrier around them, whether it's a chain link fence or a snow fence or something that would try to deter the deer. You know, at some point, that fence would probably have to be maintained over the years. I don't know what other option there is to plant that back corner of the property. So we're willing to do it, it just, I don't have confidence that unless they're physically protected, that evergreens at the rear of that property necessarily must survive.
Yeah. I think that last week we started a conversation that Ben had kind of suggested maybe switching the variety of tree would be a beneficial thing so that you could get a more deer-resistant variety than an arborvitae. Ben had kind of suggested that, you know, a red cedar might be more deer-resistant than the arborvitae. I mean, this original planting plan was probably not a great planting plan to begin with. And so I think, I think something needs to be out there because I think something, I think part of this was designed to block the view going over to the adjacent subdivision residential lots beyond the high tension wires. So I think something has to go back there. And I think maybe the board needs to be a little flexible to achieve something similar to what's on the plan, but with more deer-resistant flicks. I mean, Ben said last week the red cedar, the area is noted to be more deer-resistant. It won't cut the height, but it will certainly get some width. I don't think you want a fencing out of that. That's what you want.
We have motion detection in the way back in the years. And that's the lights for one, very low level lights, but you don't let them over.
Yeah, I mean, they make...
And they must be so...
Yeah, they make battery powered, you know, motion detection lights. I've used them myself just around the house, not for the deer, but just so it's, you know, safety. That might be...
I would trust you with your mind, and that's all I might just think to do is to check those and make sure those work.
Yeah.
And then work for us, we struggled for four or five years.
You think the red cedar would do better than the green giants?
Yeah, I think any of the juniper family would be superior to the arborvitae in that regard. I mean, there's no guarantees. The deer are browsers and they're going to test everything. So to your point about like fencing, I think what might be a lower cost solution for you to ensure if you see that they're starting to nibble on the trees and it becomes worrisome would be to, maybe if HOA has either a landscape contractor, like a mowing contractor they work with or people, you know, have someone that works on their private lots that they like. A lot of companies now are doing like these deer sprays. It's like an aromatic spray they do. And that might be a lower cost solution rather than putting some sort of permanent fencing or even temporary fencing around. That, I mean, if they're only doing those trees, it might not cost that much. But I do think that, I do think rethinking the planting, if the arborvitae are being intensively, you know, consumed by the deers, then like, I definitely wouldn't do that again.
Yeah, no, no. And just to reiterate, we're, we're agreeable to replanting the back of that detention area. So we'd gladly work with Karen and Ben, Peter, if we can come up with an alternative planting scheme. The bayberry has come up, it just, it doesn't give you the, the protection that you're looking for. One thing we thought about is maybe putting some clo, you know, in closer to the, to the neighbors that are closest to that area. Maybe we can look at that, but if we think the red cedar or something similar would be stronger species, we're willing to do it. And we just have to work together, come up with a plan and redo it.
So also true Karen question. I'm sorry, the red cedars are you planted there? And on the, on the plan, it does say that there's supposed to be ten red cedars. I'm just curious if they were planted because.
We have not gone out and done a detailed analysis comparing the as-built plan that we did receive to what's actually out there. That would be a step that has to be done prior to, prior to approving the as-built and going forward. But that hasn't been done. If, we could do that right now, we did get as-built last week. But as I said, I just don't think that subdivision is ready for tree acceptance. But we can review the as-built to try to identify problems at this point in time.
And it's just my point is if they were planted, I want grass yesterday. They didn't survive either. Is my point that the red cedars, if those can were planted, I certainly didn't see them. So they would have already.
I thought I heard somebody say last time that there was a substitution. Did I just remember that?
No, that's correct. So I, I don't, Karen, you were, you were there, but it was several years ago. But we got to that point, it was sort of unanimous discussion that I think they were, you know, the white cedars, they were the original species that were, they did not think we're going to make it. And at the time, our landscaper suggested, and it was kind of unanimous acceptance to substitute that out for the, the green giants. Now, maybe that was a mistake, but that's, at the time, that was felt to be the property to do. So the, what's out there today may not be what's on the original plans. I'm not sure a plan is ever, we die with a substitution here right away.
Right, but there was a basic plan submitted with the subdivision plan. And we haven't compared if it's close to what's, what's out there is close to what is supposed to be there. I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent exact, but we haven't compared if it's close. Yes, we did, we did, they did come, and we did talk about approving substitution because we knew that the, the other, the black, the black arborvitae was certainly going to be, that's, you know, a higher deer can be than the green giant. And so that's why we approved that subdivision substitution back then.
All right, so we'll come to a meeting of minds about trees concern. Is there also a concern about the detention?
Well, I, after seeing it the other day, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not sure it drains within seventy-two hours. I think we have to check to see if it drains within seventy-two hours. That was an awful lot of water standing in. That was after about forty-eight hours, then it rained all day Tuesday and into Tuesday night. So seventy-two hours now would not be till, you know, Saturday, Sunday.
And also to the, how, how.
Well, it all had a lot of water. I mean, it all had a lot of water by there. I, I think that if, you could give back some surety, but this, this is not factored in there that with this much water remaining, I mean.
It was called the new, it's the part where they have that new drain that's like watch all over the lawn. That was pretty far beyond what's there.
That was pretty far, and that one, that is in the surety estimate, the drainage well at the corner of Lot 12. There was money put in the surety estimate for that. And it doesn't, I'm not sure that that one works at the toll booth either.
Thank you. Bill Brugge, please, please sit with your comment. I went back last night in the dark and went counting the trees. It looked like there was, and, and we pulled the plot plan from last Thursday we were here. It looks like roughly thirty-two or thirty-three arborvitae have been planted. They're not doing very well. But there's, the plan has more, sixty-five plants and trees to be planted. So roughly half have been planted and they're not doing very well. But it, it looks to me in the dark, like it's the arborvitae. So just giving you a little bit more information as the, the house is closest to that drainage basin.
Thank you. All right, so y'all here for reduction in surety. Yes, okay. It was suggested that if we reduce twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars from a hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four. How about, how about from the board?
That was prior to going out there and actually saving the water.
Yeah, yeah, that's not enough.
I mean, it sounds like if there truly is only half of what was supposed to be planted, planted, it sounds like there's a landscaping obligation still has to happen as well as replacing those that are failing. It also sounds like we might need to be prepared to do something with detention basins if they're not doing.
Right, and so we took into account some adding more trees in the estimate. I mean, they gave us an estimate for three thousand dollars. Our consulting engineer added more money to that so that, that's where he came up with the twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. He added more money in for more planting at that.
So does that take into account a number registered? This, the sixty-four.
Thirty-eight white cedar.
Thirty-eight white cedar.
So he, he put a cost in for nine-five-hundred instead of three thousand. So that's where your, they, their original estimate was fifteen thousand, six hundred. Ours was twenty-seven, five sixty, and that included money for, for five to six one arborvitae. But again, that's not what it's going to be.
Right.
But still, it's a significant amount of money to plant in the, in the estimate.
What if we, because we have a concern with the detention basis, we have a concern with the outfall plan at the beginning. What if we decrease the surety by half? And kept sixty-five thousand dollars in surety and with that for us? Tom, you have anything to say?
I, I think the cost for the detention basis is if, in fact, we use remedial work, you'd have to allow, I guess, ten thousand dollars. Believe me, that's a guess. So that'd bring it up to thirty-seven thousand, I think, or maybe about two hundred.
So, I mean, if you kept it at sixty-five thousand, that would sort of cover all of the bases. Would you want to grade?
I would.
And once the incentive comes, we do the rest of the forty grand.
No, actually, it's, it's balanced at sixty-five thousand. We're only at least.
If it was incentive, we'd have to have to do that.
Well, yeah, sixty-five, sixty-five. But we keep, we're going to keep chipping away at this stuff. We, basically, it's been working well, but we did have a period of very weather and then the freeze. I don't know if the bike, the bike has pipe, whether it's open, we had that thing where it permanently sent itself. I like to check and see if the pipe is open enough for this, but, and now it's, it's a cold one.
When do you think you can have this laundry list done?
Well, the planting part of it would be in the spring.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
And paving would be in the spring.
The paving's done.
It's done.
That's why, that's why, that's the fault of the money. We're looking to get the paving money out of the project, so we're clearly looking to. We, we realize there are, there are some things here. There's a handicap ramp that wasn't on the plan, but sort of the guidelines have changed, so we're putting that in. We pied the site contract, we got rained out, now the snow. So there's two things here that are weather dependent. And, and then of course, the trees, the backing, the engine line, so.
And I hope that we will come to some type of agreement with the minds, the homeowners association, interpreting the planning of this project, please.
Yeah, well, yeah, we've got a good relationship with them and we'll, we'll work something out.
Okay, I hope so.
Can we get an update as to where things stand on the street acceptance? Because that was kind of the driver last time. Kind of like to understand that. That's how somebody was going to do a petition, make their files.
They did do that.
They filed something, but I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of things that go into street acceptance. The planning board has to sign off on the project first. And the planning board, first of all, their engineer has to certify that it was all done correctly. Then our engineer has to certify that everything's done. And our engineer cannot certify everything's done because we still have the punch list. And DPW isn't going to feel confident that that drain in the front is working until at least the springtime.
So, but the process is start for street accept?
Well, they file a petition, so that could be, right now, it could potentially be a placeholder.
So how do we keep everybody motivated to get this done? Because I think that's the primary driver that I have for the community. I'm frankly not that inclined to release surety unless we know people are really moving forward trying to get this accomplished. And that's just kind of how I'm thinking about it.
I think Karen, Peter, and the homeowners association have indicated that we're moving along on a, on a bunch of fronts and have been for several months here. Some of them are a little tricky. The handicap ramp organization is a little tricky. The little drainage well that you mentioned earlier required an easement to come across the homeowner's land and require a plan that need to be advised. To me, it's, it's the process, it just, it just takes a little time to get these, some of these things done. But we're, I mean, it makes perfect sense for us to push forward as quickly as we can. It's no easy for us to drag our feet. The homeowners don't want us to drag our feet. And we are incented to get this thing completed because, you know, it's time.
But what I hear you saying is we're, we're talking about maybe summer before we're ready.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, so I don't think they're going to be ready to spring town meeting. Situates typically have a fall town meeting.
Right.
So we could start by reviewing the, we got as-built last week. They, I can give that to the consulting engineer and he can start reviewing it and saying, based on the punch list and everything else, what's missing from that? So that we can keep going down that path to try to get everything done for a fall town meeting.
Right, so that's what I'm saying is given the things you think need to be filed and verified, it's not at least until mid-spring before that happens. It's not like, right? So they really won't be positioned for even requesting that, then we accept it until the fall is early. And I just don't want this, you know, the fall.
Well, and that's, so we can, we can work on several concurrent paths to try to.
No, I'm really thinking that it's really Valper's guy pushed these things around. Good question.
All right, we have a motion here. Anything else from the public? You know, I think you just probably, I was more concerned with the timeline of the planting because if they plant however many trees in the spring, are they going to be acceptable by the deadline for the August warrant? That was, I think, but we've got to just answer that. I mean, it's concerning because if you go and the trees haven't really taken root or whatever, is that not going to pass and then we'll put off again to the spring? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
And exactly what you talked about in the beginning, it's been a timeframe, you know, two or three years. Things are moving faster now, but it's been very slow before. Thousands of dollars of taxes, quick figures, as I add them up, two to three years, the people have ended this three hundred thousand dollars of taxes. And with no problem, which we spoke about before.
So why do you work with you on that? I hope. All right. Are you willing to reduce the surety, sixty-five thousand dollars from a hundred and thirty-one, eight sixty-four, ninety-six cents?
I don't think we've got plenty of money to deal with these concerns like detention bases and stuff like that.
I would, as I said, I, I would think so, but I can't sit here, I was going to say stand. I can't sit here and tell you that, yeah, there's no problem, the basin is probably available, I don't know that. Worst case is they probably would have to till up the, you know, the bottom of the basin. And I suspect thirty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars would cover that, is it? So I would say that that would be enough money.
I think a little sixty-five, but what I'd like to get is, you've got a time, a timeframe of when, the way this work is going to be done. What are you going to do, when are you going to finish the handicap?
It's already been given out to SLT lots and, and, you know, there's constant discussions with the managers over there, so.
He was going to do it two weeks ago, but then he had rained three days, you know, he had the cold and snows and it's not even bigger than half this table, but he's got to cut it out and get cement on that.
It's only fifty degrees on Monday.
As we told you last week. I'll be, I'll be on the phone to him tomorrow, but.
We can do surety.
I can't, you know, I'm trying to push this down to go do it.
Well, initially, you said build, work, do a part, so if you're forced to, no, it's not going to stay. You put a practice seven days connected to yours, so.
Yeah, so we have to have a few days in the world that it'll be long. And I'm thinking there's any other way to do it.
Okay.
Okay, I just, I just kind of want to make a comment just because I kind of crossed the PIZMOR hire recently. But, and this is to the, the owners of the home. I don't, I'm assuming that currently the stormwater infrastructure is the responsibility of the developer until everything's signed off and completed, is that correct?
It's actually responsible to the homeowners association.
Currently, it still is.
The homeowners association, but we've been.
Are you.
We're, we're taking care of it, you know, we can catch basins with.
Sure.
You know, last year, they, they did the snow plowing and swept, swept the road, so. But we've, we've put up to our responsibilities and that's.
Oh, yeah, and my point is more to the homeowners association, not to you. Which is that, as you can see, stormwater infrastructure requires a lot of things to be maintained properly. And the stormwater infrastructure, I mean, I had reviewed this permit before I was on the planning board, but most of the time, that's the responsibility of the homeowners association. So street acceptance will not help with the operation and maintenance of the stormwater. So just make that a boundary that that will always be a burden on the homeowners association to make sure that that infrastructure is properly maintained and operated.
The catch basins, they're going to be putting by the.
That's the town, the street, the catch basin is in the road, so.
The retention basins. And they, we've gone over that, we had weakness fall and they, it's been, we cut the, yeah.
All right. More to step, dear comment. Move to step dear comment to LLC's request to reduce the amount of surety being held by the planning board for completion of Derek Cronin subdivision.
And actually, towards our 20-year comes, quick follow-up on Ben, who Ben has given. So the catch basins, you know, we're just done raining after 72 hours, you said, are those the homeowner's responsibility right now or the developer's?
It's the homeowners association.
Because they don't drain, right? So my grandpa goes out in the middle of the summer, look at the ducks and stuff. So they haven't been draining, so this is now like, this is our responsibility. And they're not draining now, what happens when you go up and do your 72-hour?
I don't think we've signed off on that, right?
No, no, no.
So I think it's still the developer's responsibility.
But still the developer, because I just, I just heard, just heard that, okay.
But ultimately, when we do sign off on it, it will be yours.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Unless you guys, do you guys disagree with that? Do you disagree with that? Like, I've heard you say at some point that you thought it was homeowner's responsibility, so.
Well, I mean, as far as like maintaining, cutting the, cleaning the debris out, that kind of stuff on the detention bonds, technically is a homeowners association at this time.
It's already been turned over to them?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, which is based on documents.
It has been turned over.
Yeah. I think it has to.
So is it still their responsibility until we accept it?
I mean, if it doesn't drain, it's going to, the problem is going to have to go back to the developer because, I mean, the project has gone on, probably, you know, it wasn't, this is an older subdivision and, and, you know, things got held up, so, you know. Wasn't draining at one point, yes, but is there, I mean, that's one thing we check when we submit an asbill. We check to make sure everything is draining and functioning right. And if it's not, it's, it's got to go back to the developer.
I mean, we've never had a problem with it, so we're, Peter can go up and check it out, but through the years, it would have been defending, we haven't had any problems with it. It's not draining, you know, we have a pipe that regulates it, so you have to turn that, open it up, close it according to the season. But we haven't had any problems with it, it's been inspected in the beginning, it's been, we've cut it every year, and we haven't had that. We're holding water problems, so I'm curious to see what's going on.
But that's all it could be, oh, we have any, we're sure we'll have to have on how to maintain these detention bonds, it's going to be a whole rulebook on that.
I just want to say quickly, we are maintaining, spent hundreds, 10,000 developers recently, and we continue to maintain that area. Out of our castles, which we know in the future, we have to do all the time anyways, but the actual original job, we had nothing to do with.
Move to step dear comment to LLC's request to reduce the amount of surety being held by the planning board for completion of the year common subdivision from $131,864.96 to $65,900. Remaining in the college.
$65,000.
You're begging $65,000?
You're begging $65,000, okay. Remaining in the college as remaining working includes the drainage well at the quarter of 1/12. The handicap ramp strip, cleaning the drains, system, updating affiliate, filing asbills, disowing disputes, placing at the detention basin, getting contingency and reduction is consistent with the engineer's regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Right, five minutes. All paid.
As always, approval of this plan is not endorsed by this company.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, go for it. I move for your says approval not implied, fair or random, since Massachusetts showing a division of excessive parcel. 58 yes, one yes, one C, 208, Chief Justice Bush, by the way, put in by Minnesota Department of Public Health after his first days, entered care for the Gabe Donovan, dated 2019. As the division of lands shown on the company claims in office subdivision, he possibly showed cause for maintenance or change in route line, which does not often be 55, as implied under the section of my law. Is there a second?
Second.
All paid.
Thank you very much.
Moving rapidly along, captain. I move for approval requisition of $11,002.84 sent to Karen Association for professional consulting services for the master plan. A $915,000 award sent to Nell Corporation for period use universal expenses for the travel consulting on us. The true force of a third grade MTA group. Is it, is that, is there a second?
Yep.
All paid.
Aye.
Minutes, no minutes, no minutes. Lay's on the force. Stephen Vaughn.
Yeah, well, Ben and I and Kay were at the water study update committee on it yesterday. And they provided, I think, a similar overview of what we had heard in August, with maybe some updated information. In particular, there was a discussion about the pipe cleaning. The first conversation was around groundwater basically, and there was a discussion about the pipe cleaning process, but the directional flushing, you know, and the ice picking and that. By all accounts, at least five, seven water samples, they appeared to have reduced the amount of manganese in, in the water through this process. Some, they didn't have any evidence of manganese, some they had some evidence of, but indicated it was less than the limits they'd seen last summer. So I don't think they're really known until they're doing another summer. But that process appears to be going on, except for the fact that they said the, the pipe picking company might be going out of business. The ice picking, I'm sorry.
There's only one of them.
There's only one of them, apparently, whoever owns it has decided to get out of the business. There was a discussion about the, sort of the baseline analysis, and I think that's where a lot of discussion occurred. They had a lot of, you see, I've given everybody a copy of the presentation, but you see, there's a lot of sort of use of sort of average day numbers and that kind of stuff. They're sort of talking about what's, what the demand is versus what the capacity is. And we asked at one point, you know, kind of, where are you going with this, are you getting to this underlying methodology that from a planning perspective, that's for, and was in the RFP? And, you know, reassured us that's where they're heading, right? But there was a lot of discussion about how she tackled that, and somebody I know pretty well came up with, you know, sort of this, the same concept that I think we talked about before, which is, let's look at drought here. Use that as a baseline from a conservative point of view, sort of build up from there, all of the issues we've talked about to say, what's, what's kind of our, our starting point from the analysis of what's available for additional capacity, additional demand request, you know, additional capacity. I hear that's where they're going to go with it, having that kind of dividend available. So they use mostly what I would consider to be sort of average day kind of stuff, which still is a guess where we want to go. And I think a lot of the discussion was around, well, you know, we can do this thing and that thing during, if, if a problem occurs in it. And the point I think we were trying to make was that we're making a 50-year decision, right, from a planning perspective. So we ought to have sort of a, a standard methodology and base, a baseline to sort of figure out how we make that decision. It's not a one-year, how do we deal with emergencies, how should it operate in sort of normal operation with a conservative case, which in this case would be a summer, you know, a summer period with, with drought. So I think that's where they're going, but wait and see. But I thought it, you know, generated a lot of good conversation about it, and I'm just hoping that they will have this approach to, to work with from a client perspective. Because my, my, my thought is that if they've got this methodology, and each time you have a drill company or something like that, you say, okay, do the math, right, and show us what that means. And treat everybody sort of the same way, and there's no, you know, it's, it's kind of over the book, right? So, but we don't have it yet.
Is it committed to come back and use it in studying your book?
They've committed to it, yeah. When, I'm not sure, but they've committed to it. They said they're going to produce it, so we'll wait to see what the numbers look like, and I'd love to see how they, you know, sort of make these decisions and give luck to it. But then there was also a discussion about sort of the state affairs of the system equipment and sort of the capital needs of the system. And they talked about sort of prior to capital needs that they've sort of addressed or identified to date as being a local bucket water treatment plant. And essentially, the case they made was that it needs to be completely replaced to $235 million, who knows how good a number that is, but, you know, that's kind of a gross number to put on it right now. And they said it would take close to four years, as we said, to design it, right? And that the modifications that made in the existing treatment plant really only have about a five-year life. So they're sort of making a case, we got to get on with designing it. But obviously, I think from capital investment point of view, somebody's got to look at the big picture about investing 35 million. Because they also have on their list about $2.5 million worth of sort of wells and pumps and an improved skade system for the whole system. And then they have adding a third water storage tank to the two that you have, because we can't repair either one in place right now. So they essentially have to build another one.
Then you talk about, you go up our, on the summer street, the Hennessy property.
They didn't, yeah, they didn't identify where, at this point, I think they just said, you know, in order to give adequate storage and really to address the failing condition of the other two, we need to build a third one. I didn't hear a number, did you hear a number or less? No. I don't think they put a number on it, but I'm sure it's multi digits, so I think it's probably not.
$235,000.
Yeah. They did indicate that certain, their 20-year plan, which included distribution piping and all that, was somewhere in the neighborhood of $110 million. So it's a big number. You know, we always saw was sort of the summer, you know, so when you look at it, the only numbers you'll see are going to be about the wells and the pumps. They didn't have those other numbers on the slides, but they did talk about 35 million, 30 million. And they also indicated that, you know, there, there are certain areas in the piping system which is sort of driving this additional, I think, of water storage tank where they have firewater flow issues, right? And those still need to be sort of sorted out in some way. So, you know, I guess the, the short version is they've made some progress and they've given us some of that feedback, but we're still just waiting for that, you know, kind of the final product that we're. I, I thought there was a lot of good conversation, a lot of people sort of talking about how we, how we really did our hands around this, right, from a quality point of view.
Did we do it?
Yeah.
I don't, most of it.
Yeah, you can, you can go online and watch it.
I'm just concerned by what that you remember is the computer system is still using DOS for some of it.
Well, that's the meter, that was the water department meter, I think it's a two-year revenue program, right, maybe until two years. Yeah, I think they're updating now, but they run DOS. And I know, you know, over at the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, they were on Windows, you know, whatever it was. For the longest period. And, and, you know, they made the point that everything, this whole system is essentially a manual system. There, there's no real sort of automated monitoring, any of that kind of stuff. And I think that's why they identified, you know, spending a fair amount of money on the skade system, which with wholeheartedly endorse, endorse, we, we need to sort of bring everything up while we're doing, while we're modernizing the people. Yeah, I think there, there were a lot of issues. The one thing they didn't really hear anything about, they didn't have a chance to ask questions about, that I'm hoping we'll see in the final report is not just, okay, here's a capital plan, but what, how does that translate into the operation maintenance plan, right? And how much ongoing sort of贪污 budget money is that, right, for operations and maintenance? And hopefully, they'll get to that as part of the final, sort of capital plan as well.
The final, do we?
What's that?
Final.
I think anybody made a real commitment, right? I, I'm thinking we're still a few months away. It doesn't feel like it's going to be anytime in the next couple of weeks or it's, and I think they also got, Stephen Vaughn got diverted into other issues. So, you know, I think the study ended up slowing down as well. So it's, it's kind of a big issue for that, is, you know, kind of what that time considered indicated a next maybe or anything. So, you know, I think we're still waiting for the, for the, you know, sort of long-term planning tool for water analysis. The other thing that didn't really come out there, and it's not quite to me, they're going to spend much time on is what's the capacity of the, of the aquifer, right, of the groundwater system itself? And is that getting, is that getting more stressed? I think they're basing all of their capacity capabilities on the testing of those dumping wells for the P. But, you know, I don't know how to translate it to current day and what that means.
Are we still chasing our legal permit?
Yes, for, for which ones? They're, they're working on ETB.
Seventeen A, Charlie.
Well, seventeen A, they've already, they've already got seventeen A, I believe. Maybe it was ATB, that's closed.
You just don't worry about it, because ETB, the water plant, like wastewater treatment plant.
They didn't really go into, you know, a long discussion about the things that were in the works to maybe increase capacity. There wasn't mention of, you know, increasing the, sort of the freeboard and reservoir, they had another 30 days' worth of reservoir. It was pretty clear, we had some slides up there, that if you were to lose the wastewater treatment plant during the summer, you were, I mean, the water treatment plant, you were a big trouble. You didn't have the capacity and everything. They really relied on water treatment plant sometime. And there, there wasn't, I don't think there was any real work that was done on usage. Samantha was there, and she was talking about, she looked at a lot of meter data, and, you know, could, could really narrow it down about where, but my share of water is gone, right? The top, you know, the top 10% use 25% of water in town, right? So, so, you know, I think that would be a really useful exercise to keep going through. They don't have any way right now of keeping track of that on anything more than a quarter-by-quarter basis. That was one on my end, they didn't real, hadn't really addressed the capital budget was sort of automated meter. was sort of automated meter that you could use on a kind of a real-time basis to, on day-to-day basis to identify, say, where the water was going and where, if you had significant, you know, breaks, your usages or leaks or something, you can hear about, you know, not in a quarter or two, but in a couple of days, you know. I don't know what value the water department gets on those things, so, but it wasn't on the list. My, my guess is we didn't get the whole list anyway, so it's probably coming. That's probably it, did you have anything else on that?
No, I think you pretty much covered most of what I would have said.
Except for Tom, that is obsessed with photos, or the screen that said that we need a new water treatment plant, that said, if we do this, we will not disturb the litter field, or thankfully that enough to work on the baseball field. And they didn't, he, he told us that three times. It's my, like I said, our priority target.
That's a good thing, you know, I say the baseball field, you can't do just one thing, right?
Not to touch that field, not to worry.
Well, I think he had a, they had a box set up of where the plant would go, but they indicated that it was just, it was just pretty much a cartoon, because they would have to really site this thing, because the box looked like it was a little too close to the, to the actual reservoir and stuff, or to the pond. So they had to figure out physically how to fit that relatively tight space there, because they're saying they have to keep it in, keep the old one in operation while they're building it up. So it's not like you can tear it all down, put it down in there.
Well, Samantha had done a presentation, I think it was the South for Coalition, on water, evidence who uses the most, should use situate, and it was absolutely fascinating, who uses the most water.
Yep.
It is just amazing.
Yeah.
That 10% use, actually, it's, I think it's more than 25%. It's a, there's a lot of water, and who are they?
Well, apparently a lot of them are sprinters, just, like, long water systems. And, you know, that would be really valuable for a condition, I talked to her afterwards about the difficulty of doing what she did with it, you know, because people are not on, they're not all billed for the same three months and a quarter, some of them are staggered, so it's hard, you know, you have to do a lot of corrections, right, to make sure you're looking at June, July, August for all of the meter data, right? And she got it, and she said, and she got that data, she got it from DOS, right? So she had to do a fair amount of manipulation just to get it into expression. Hopefully, you know, going forward, it'll be easier to do. But that's, that was kind of the message on there. Yeah, and you can look at the, I pulled up the presentation, you can look at the presentation. The one thing, the other thing they did, and we should mention this, is that they looked at sort of, part of what they looked at was projections on growth, right? They look at population data, both from the NA PC and UMass studies, to, to try to get a sense for, you know, what kind of growth should they plan for as they project out, because the, the system that they're looking at, the capital investment they're looking at is tied into what the future of demand is on the system as well. And I was actually surprised because it looked like the, it's hard for everybody to see, but it, it looks like they sort of flattened it out from a growth perspective, even though the sort of historic growth has, you know, been something a little more aggressive. But their indication is that the projection of growth are actually that, that, I mean, it's sort of declining in situate, really, it's not sure, you know, fewer kids, all of that kind of stuff, that's sort of putting a downward pressure on growth, which from a water capacity point of view, that's, you know. But it's hard to tell, you know, it's a projection, that's all it is. And if you, if you sort of perfect the last 20 years, you'd be in a different place. But, you know, they, they at least went back to some of these sources and tried to tie it in together. And the other thing they, they talked about was water usage has been declining, been declining on average, they said about 2.5% a year. But it's sort of hard to tell what's, what that's related to, right? So, so if you, if you institute a lot of overtime and a lot of water, water restrictions, well, of course, your water uses is declining, right? And so I think, I think our challenge is sort of figuring out what's the baseline that we should plan for in terms of how much water should people be able to use? Would they not be able to, you know, wash their car, you know, do these other things? Or do you build a baseline that has a certain amount of that, that usage that you would anticipate for their, their user, and then, and then work it later from there? I'd just be interested to see what they have to say.
Any other ways of, 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 why don't you tell us about the narrative or the town? Okay, this was interesting, too, this narrative about the mitigation that...
The mitigation?
That Hennel MLC for, they approved last night, the reconstruction redo of the Hennel Mall. And, I would say from the article, many things, this group that's why they built Hennel Crossing has given the town $500,000 with the housing trust, $100,000 for, no, $100,000 for mitigation for the neighborhood, another $100,000 to do, to take down the Pussey Dam, and then they were going to replace 800 water meters at the turn, at the turn of $350 each.
So they were kind of trying to create water capacity for themselves, you know, I guess.
Maybe, but still it was close to $150.
I wouldn't find that down a major for developing that source.
But it's unfortunate that we're not able to have...
We don't have any of those types of developments. And who, who really led the mitigation discussing that, or was it the selectmen?
It was the planning board.
That's a big difference.
It is a big difference, and we were unable to drive the mitigation loss at all.
I think so.
Yes, it is. They took it away. At any rate, okay, Lynn.
All right, so the senior center pre-construction conference is gonna be January 3rd. There's supposed to be putting binder down on phase two, half of phase two at Seaside Situate on Monday. We, I sent you a lot of something today about permeable paving, they want to switch to front blocks and do some patios and do a permeable paving, so I said, that's getting period viewed right now. If you could just get back to me, if you think that that's an insignificant change, you want to see them, they're trying to do it under one condition that kind of says they just kind of can do it. Just let me know your thoughts on that.
That I'd like to see period, see what?
Yes, I just sent you out here today. So that's, Jim was on track for spring, summer, starting construction. They came in this week, they met the new architect, they met contractor, so they're putting all the pieces together now to start proceeding on that.
Will they come in here?
We would met with them internally in town hall.
Oh, okay, I, when we talked about the city, you refer back here to the board?
Um, no.
Okay.
Anything else? That's major, that's major stuff. All right, anything else? Let's take this motion.
Second.
All okay?